...in the council chambers at Ailoo West Hall in the city of Alpine, Texas. For the purpose of considering to meet the tax agenda, this notice is mostly pursuant to the Texas Volunteering Act, Section 551.043, Texas Government Code. Public notice that use of cellular phones are prohibited in the city council chambers during meetings of the city council. Members of the audience will be provided an opportunity to address the council on any agenda items as to determination of a forum and proof of notice at the meeting. Remarks will be limited to a total of three minutes per person.
Okay.
Please write your name on the list so we may call you in order. Please speak into the microphone located in the podium. State your name and address. If you have petition or other information pertaining to yourself, please present it to the city secretary. State law general prohibits the council from discussing or taking any action on any issue not included on the agenda, but if appropriate, the council may schedule the topic for future discussion or refer the matter to staff. No personal attacks on council members or city staff will be allowed. The mayor and/or city council members may call when ordered to stop personal attacks. If any individual continues to personally attack the elected official or staff member in the meeting, they need be barred. Callers being toward will have an invocation by Mr. Reverend Virginia F.
Virginia F. from St. James Episcopal Church, one of the lay worship leaders. Dear Lord God, be present at this meeting. We thank you for the hearty souls that came out in this weather to glorify you by their decisions and actions. We ask you, Lord, to make us vulnerable, that we know the needs of the elderly, the youngest, of the homeless, of the animals without homes. Protect them in the weather that is coming. Protect us, make us humble and open to your leading. May your Holy Spirit be poured out upon all flesh and make us humble to accept your guidance. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Welcome to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our House of Commons, our House of Commons, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
City Secretary of the House of Commons?
Mayor, we do have a forum and the notice was posted at 12:00 PM on January 31st, 2020.
Okay, we'll now take public comments, three minutes per person. Is there anybody who'd be precious to speak? See none, then we go ahead and move. I'm sorry? I didn't see you, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I'm Charlotte Hale from San Antonio, Texas, and I come about every six months as we're planning an Old Spanish Trail Conference. And 100 years ago, they came down to Alpine to decide where the Old Spanish Trail should go through here. And that auto highway is now turning 100 years old, and so we're celebrating it. They drove from here to Fort Davis, to Valentine, to Martha, to see where it should go. And we're going to reenact that, March 26th to the 28th. We'd like to invite all of you to come and to post it on your social media so that people from Alpine can come and welcome the speakers and the people, the exhibitors who will come from afar for the conference. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else? Okay, no presentations. And I don't have a report. City Attorney, you have none. City Manager?
Uh, we're gonna say, yes. Television's on, boys.
Well, the hope in the plan is that this time the fonts are a little bigger. Get a little walkthrough. This will continue to be a work in progress, but all the slides will be online afterwards for everybody to take a look at. Really wanted to start off today talking a little bit about some of the work that our parks team has done. Robert Gonzalez, of course Eddie Molinar, Parks Director, working with our parks group, Parks Board, and Leadership Big Ben. Leadership Big Ben was looking to do a service project for the city of Alpine. And looking back at the Master Parks Plan, what that particular plan called for was kind of the recreation of that George Beal, Allen Barker, also known as Notable Spark, into more of kind of a natural state, a couple benches, table to sit at. So if you haven't had a chance to slip by there, head by there, it's been cleared off. Trees have been trimmed, like four really kind of deceased trees that got cut down, mulched that, it's available for a couple of the new trees that we're gonna put in. Really appreciate the work that the group has been doing out there on behalf of Alpine. So very active Parks Board and very active volunteer groups. One section, and I'm not, you know, I know this is somewhat of an eye chart, I'm not gonna go through and read every piece part of our goals and initiatives by department. I've encapsulated that on a slide here a few slides ahead. The main context I wanted to share with everybody is that each department is working towards specific goals and initiatives to better the city. Part of the leadership training that we're going through right now is a call to action with all of our leaders to really start refining those goals. What I want to do from a city perspective is, you know, continue to use this as a roadmap and then update every quarter as we go along so that you have a working document that you can reflect back on. A part of, you know, requests that we see, but also part of, you know, our mantra moving forward is how do we set out goals and then actually achieve them for the benefit of the city? So I'm gonna slide through a couple of these a little quicker only because I've got an encapsulation of kind of the key, some of the key themes that we're driving towards right now. Utilities and Police Department, both Chief Martin and Scott Perry are working back with Rowan and myself on what is the right pay structure for us to recruit and retain employees. We took a look back at our last five years of turnover, looking forward, how do we help that trend down? Some of the places that we've identified where we have higher risk are certainly with utilities and PD. The other thing that's interesting is these are our more higher licensed, and we're investing more in training with these individuals, so we certainly want to retain them. And some of that is we, as Chief Martin, Scott, myself talk about, you know, they've got their department budget that's been approved by council, and so how do we stay within that, but also continue to have meaningful brackets on wages so that we can recruit and retain? So that's a driving theme that we're working on each week. You know, paving season this year and our streets rehab, those without saying, continues to be a high bar item for our community. We did get our responses back on the RFQ that we put out, we did one response, we anticipated that Jared Roberts would respond. You know, the challenge we have certainly in getting people outside of the area here is most of those that are to the north are really doing work in La Nueva, and they're getting paid to bring it forward. We're fortunate to have the Jared family here that actively want to continue to do the work. So now Megan and I are working through those reserve accounts and what money we have so we can come back to council and make a recommendation. We're really looking at the first part of March. Megan will talk a little bit about that in her presentation today.
So Eric, was that, was the bid within what you'd expected? Okay.
Our cost per block was right there where we expected. Obviously, the application that we're looking at with the alleys and trying to buff up our base a little, or beef up our base a little bit there and come in with a hot mix and do some curving in there to help with the longevity of those roads. That's gonna be our highest dollar stretch from Second Street all the way out to Eighth Street. You know, community engagement, we've got our next installment of coffee with City Manager this week, those have been highly successful and continue to send, have a little feedback on those. We've also had requests to have one in the evening, so one of our upcoming, will be in the evening at the visitor center. Also, Park Management Radio has opened up for our department heads and second cup of coffee. Scott Perry and Chief Martin, those of you who listened last week, Chief was on, and provides a great forum. Chief's here this evening, he's also gonna start with some of his own coffee sessions out in the community. Very well received, you know, it's an out walking Sunday, sitting through Coconut Park, saw a couple of residents, and we talked a little bit about that. Very excited to have that type of forum. And then, you know, certainly height visibility of community gatherings, talk about that as a staff. I went to Saros game this last weekend to support the university, and several members of our team is really out there supporting those community groups. And then willing to engage, right? So if folks approach us in public, it's not, hey, I'm off duty, I don't wanna talk about the city. We're being very thoughtful and very responsive. You know, that really helps us when we think about individual department goals and what they're working on and ensuring that our community is grounded on those as well. Parks development, you know, I think the city did a wonderful job on the Master Parks Plan and working through some of those grants there. Of course, from the reserve fund allocations, we're gonna talk more specifically about Not Little Spark, or, excuse me, Prebleton River Park in this fashion. Code enforcement, you know, I won't steal David's thunder, but we certainly have a lot of opportunities there. And so as he's working with his team and his plan, he'll talk a little bit more depth about that. But it's certainly very important to the community. I know Megan and I had a conversation earlier today, you know, our goal is to create an environment where the citizens feel very comfortable calling the department head, calling myself. We certainly would never deter them from calling an elected official as well, but we just wanna have that open to them. And then, you know, finally, really, what I call governing authority audits. So Chief Martin's got T-Cold here tomorrow. Scott Perry had T-CQ here last week looking at what's our treatment plan. Next week, T-CQ's coming back out to look at our landfill. And so these types of audits then will always create us some actionable items to, so. I'll post this online, always wanna make sure, you know, council is grounded on these Leadership training, three classes complete. Super excited about our last one because of the focus on strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats for our leaders, as well as goal setting. Setting those goals and it's rallying your team around those goals and keeping focused on them is where we're gonna see continued success for the city. You know, our next two trainings really are gonna encompass more of that functional, you know, how do I, how do I not only commit the plans to paper, but then how do I work with my individuals on my team? And then if I have conflict, how do I deal with conflict, right? Both with my team members or, you know, if you have a citizen who comes in who had a need and they felt that they were disadvantaged, you know, how do we make sure we work through that? So very excited. And then, you know, I, I think from, you know, looking across our city teams, we're seeing this real positive attitude, willingness, although, you know, there's this recognition that we're always gonna have bumps in the road. And so how do we make sure we're communicating well and dealing with those bumps so we can continue to follow? You know, if it doesn't happen overnight, it happens over sustained work and focus over time. And then really, you know, that has to translate into our review programs with our employees. And so how do we effectively work back with our team members on their reviews so that they have meaningful dialogue with their supervisors? There's goals that are set, and when they achieve them, they're recognized and there's a difference. You know, that really kind of flows into, you know, policies. You know, we certainly, from a city perspective, we have our governing charter, we have ordinances that provide us direction as to the overall running of the city, but then as you niddle down into it, you have certain department level policies and procedures on how we act. If there are things that were governed, whether it's the charter or the ordinance or maybe policies in T-CQ or at other state level, you know, our individual policies have to be in alignment with that to work for us to do that. But one of the charges of our department heads too is to look at these policies out there, and are they impacting their ability to get things done, right? So part of their charge is how do I refresh policies so that we get things done more effectively? And then certainly, we're looking at some combination of policies relative to utilities. We'll have Stephanie from her utility billing to present around the 18th or 3rd of March to not only talk about that one month cutoff with our water, but also where we're at from updating those policies on the ordinance relative to rates, deposits, account ownership, all of those things that ultimately are governed by council. And so we wanna certainly address that in the next, so. And then, you know, certainly we think about our grants that are out there, we've got Marcy come in now as our grant specialist, and there are certain grants that we go after that require, like in the Police Department, maybe in ethics policies, we have to make sure we're having good effective ethics policy on those grant insurances. And of course, airport, you know, so many of the airport dollars are tied to our adherence to the 39 grant insurances there. And then continued training on purchase order policy. So as we, as we walked into 2020, something that we talked about was asset management and transparency and how we handle our purchase orders and policies that relate to that. And so Megan's been holding a serious meeting with our administrative support, you know, it drives back to accountability, you know, if you've got a purchase that's $500 or more and there's not three quotes there, but we're not gonna sign online, you gotta go back and get three quotes, because that's what we commit, if we're gonna do that's what we do with council. So super excited about that, you know, it's, like I said, you know, it's time to get bumps in the road, you know, somebody wants to get something done a little quicker than, than maybe the better thing you could do.
So what's your strategy? How many policies and procedures do we have to say?
Too many?
Okay, so we know the answer to that question.
Too many.
Do you have kind of this, every three years we're gonna look at every one of them, or have you thought through that yet? What's the overall gate plan? And then giving you a look at how many there are, you try to reduce by 10%, 20%? Have them? I just...
Yeah, so in the short term, Lorena is working on our personnel policy. We had a policy that went in place in 2016, and then there was a refresh in 2018. There's some differences in those policies, so we wanna come back and narrow that down so that there's, my sense is we'll probably eliminate 8% to 10% of those. She's gonna come back and make a recommendation to our department heads through March, they'll be looking at it. Chief Martin is working specifically on the Police Department policies. What would you say, or do you think you'll see a reduction in the overall policies, or do you think you'll, you'll see maybe an increase?
I think with the rewording of some of the policies, there will probably be less policies for directors.
And I don't know what the right answer is, I just think it's a strategy to think about, because ultimately it consumes time and overhead.
Right.
And non-value added, so getting, and then what's the baseline? If you have this regular refresh cycle every couple, three years, then you got this normal process, oh, we're gonna look at this one however often we've got it anyway. That's a thought, just put your, if you're over there.
Property real estate. You know, we continue to talk about what we did here with City Hall. We looked at property across the street that Mr. Fielder owns, he's got 3,000 square feet. We're also, I've been going back and forth, telephone tag with David Warack, who owns, currently owns the building that the post office leases, and then he internally leases land from us. We have looked at that lease now that he has with the US Postmaster and know what the city could, could expect from a revenue perspective in 2032, if we just hold on to it. And then, as I've shared with Mr. Warack in an email, you know, knowing that, that puts a certain valuation on it from our perspective. And so we'll see if he wants to come back and make the city an offer that the city can contemplate. Second property is really the old Sunshine House. What do we really wanna do? You know, I've heard everything from bulldoze it down to somebody wants to buy it and renovate it. I think from a city perspective, we've got an overarching thought that this was the first schoolhouse in Alpine, right? So from its horrible perspective, there's meaning there, but there's also that cost of maintenance, or at what point does a building get to that level where it can't be rehabilitated? And so I haven't had anybody call City Hall and say, hey, I'm interested in buying it, but if they do, we'll break that for them.
What's the policy? It's a historical building, it's got a black on it. What's the policy as far as if it deteriorates, it won't be cheaper to tear it down, can it be done?
I don't know off the top of my head, we'd have to talk with the Historical Commission. I think Tom Kennedy, on our planning its own, he's taken more of a leave relative to that.
I think there'd have to be some consultation with the Texas Historical Commission on that issue.
Yeah, that's what I thought, because it's...
Not just local.
No, it's gotta be the Texas, you know, yeah, because I had heard that, that certain historical buildings, you can renovate them in sight, but the site has got to stay the way it originally was.
I don't think it's an absolute bargain, of course, it's demolishing, but actually kind of the consultation with them before you did that, with all the current plans, it's just, you just don't put it off the cuff without consultation.
Yeah, because that's gonna be awfully expensive to try to renovate it. We did a walk through Mount Toma, what in there, it's horrible.
Maybe somebody would like it for a therapy and a deep...
Will they pay their fair share?
They'd buy it for us.
Yeah, so, so those are real, are real too, kind of key properties that we're cued up there. You know, I think we haven't been as aggressively pursuing what a building plan would look like if we expanded here. Andrew, Eddie, Cynthia, Megan, myself, need to cue that up here in the next couple of weeks. But ultimately, you know, space is important for us as we continue to grow this city. And we'll continue to advocate the selling of, call it the dead end streets, the unusable alley spaces and things of that nature. We're getting anywhere between 36 cents a square foot up to about 82 cents a square foot across town, so through piece evaluation.
So are these parts on that were donated to the city and they're sold to the real objects of the vacant lot, would have to maintain them all over the weeks and whatnot? Are we either selling those or give them back to the donor?
Well, the only one we really had like that was this pocket park, the George Allen one. Yeah, well, Medina was, was committed as a park, I think.
And that's a viable park, we've got the equipment in there.
Yeah, we've got a lot of path around it.
I was talking about the one by the bus park off Del Rio.
Oh, the old American Legion Park?
No, there's another park behind it. When I went with UT representative, we went to all the parks and that was included in it. It's a vacant lot right now, and it's right next to the, to the bus park. It's all Del Rio, huh?
That is school property.
That's school property? It was on their list as a, as a school, as a park?
It actually had been donated, and I know this because when we were actually appraising all of our parks, after GIO did a lot, we're naming it to the CAD and stuff, the city had actually donated that to the school.
Yeah, okay.
So now it's school property.
It's school property now, okay.
Forward, Texas Community Challenge, I always like to kick this up there. We've got a big event coming up at Word 15. It's gonna be a community-wide cleanup, should be exciting. Appreciate the mayor and Legion also providing, you know, some food, a long way for that. We're, we've fallen down to 15th place, but we're hanging in there, we're fighting hard, and it's really a need, a need initiative that's out there. And then the other thing I just really wanted to share with council today is, because we had talked about this before, when you think about, you know, our employees and what we're doing from a healthcare perspective, you know, one of our strong retention policies, important retention policies is having good benefits, good healthcare benefits. And so tomorrow, Nina Lorena has organized for the Warren TNL to be here in the evenings. We're gonna talk with our, give our spouses, significant others, the opportunity to come in and ask questions about the healthcare plan. Not many employers do that, most of the time they just send a book home and, or point you to an online website and say, go for it. And many times we have employees who aren't maximizing the use of the healthcare benefit that, that we're providing for them. So we're gonna make that available and then talk about some strategies for the upcoming years, whether it's telehealth and some of the other health preventative health measures that are able to keep all smart employee bases in their houses.
Hopefully, we'll have at least 60, 70 volunteers, which would be good, that's not including the city staff. I would like the city staff to help with sort of, you know, breadth of, the confidence and whatnot.
There'll be several, several while. Great day being here in Alpine. I thought I'd pay tribute to all of our, well, I'm sorry, I didn't put the hospital district in there. You get the clicker. All you have to do is point it over here. I don't think it has a laser.
Point it over there.
Just beam those up.
Well, Eric sent my report, so. So we survived the audit, and the auditors here were, well, we're not done, I should rephrase that. We survived them being here two and a half days. Every year they come out for a couple of days and that's their field work. So during that time, we provide them anything they request, they go through all of our invoices, accounts payables, receivables, or utility billing. They find everything and anything. They did find quite a few... They did find quite a few little things that we need to correct with our utility billing. We knew that we had some, some hiccups, but we're willing to fix them. Out of 2,800 accounts, they pulled 40. So it was bound to have one pull that we had a hiccup in. So they helped us kind of figure out what we need to do and how we can get it back on track. We were able to provide them everything that they needed. There was no searching high and low. We did have everything available, which is always awesome to say. I sat down with Marlene and we discussed a lot of internal controls. I'm always the big picture person. I always want to look at the big picture and not the step one, two, three, four to get to the big picture. So we took it a step back and looked at some of the internal controls that we can change that, you know, just minor, whether it be additional documentation, signature, verifying dates, just little things that we don't think about on a day-to-day basis, but make a big difference when you get audited. And of course, we're not done with the audit, so I've got about four emails from her today that I need to go reply to as they go through our GL and all that. They come up with more questions, additional documentation that they require. We tried to scan everything and put it on a flash drive, but we seem, we seem to always miss what they're looking for. But we always have it. From the finance department, we survived January. All of our reports were completed and submitted in the necessary time. Then U2's 1099s, we also get the approvals from those agencies. So when you get the email from the IRS saying we've accepted, it always feels good. There's no issues or concerns. February, we are continuing to work on the assets and inventory. We do have a new internal form that Eric had given me a few suggestions to update. We'll be utilizing that. Department-wise, we're addressing some of the internal controls and documentation with our main focus being on purchasing. If you've gone back to all of our audits, it's always kind of one of the top things we get dinged on. We process so many invoices, purchase orders, statements, RFPs, contracts. It, it's just better to get that policy in place to clean it up so that there's no more questions relating. You know, we do it one way this time, another way another time. That way every department, administration, everyone's on board. I have been meeting with the departments to kind of give them the do's and don'ts of a purchase order, to make sure to fill it out completely, put the account number to sign it, provide the proper documentation. We, we can help so much before we're doing the POs for them. So that's one of the controls we like them to have because it is their budget. It is their money, they should know what's coming in and out. So this kind of helps them. Our big projects, policies. So the two that I have on here are grant and purchasing. The grant one is required by the federal and state government. The city hasn't had one, we've started it. You guys have actually looked at a draft of it. It's going back and fine tuning it to meet the city's needs and still be in compliance with the federal and state guidelines. Our purchasing policy also ties into that grant policy. So they kind of work hand in hand because the grant policy specifically addresses how you're purchasing, how you're keeping your assets, how are you, you know, keeping your documentation? Like Eric said, there's a lot of things that other outside agencies require. And if we don't have those in place, we're running to council last minute like we did with the next fixed policy to make sure we don't get dinged for the next time we apply. So we're trying to make sure that they line up correctly. I also wanted to, since Rick had brought it up, on our, what policies come out of our office or addressed by our office? So our investment policy is, is yearly. It's, it's in the policy itself. This year I'm hoping to have that cleaned up a little bit and get the Government Finance Officers Association stamp of approval saying that we have an outstanding policy. In order to do that, of course, we have to address any of the changes that have come up from when it was originally approved in 2014. So we've used the same policy, but every year something slightly changed. What you're allowed to invest in and what you're not allowed to invest in. So it's just keeping up with those items. Our budget and finance policies were actually approved in 2018. They're part of the yearly budget process, so they're approved yearly and can of course be changed yearly and, and at, at some point even possibly combined. Of course, we have the grant policy. That one is changed based on federal and state laws. And if we were to change our purchasing policy, we'd have to change our grant policy since they do tie in together. Our credit card policy and petty cash policies could ultimately be combined and reviewed as necessary. Our credit card policy is going to change because we are going to a new system, which does require a little bit more effort on our departments. So that it needs to be outlined in our policy that, hey, you are responsible for the charge you make. The only policy that really needs to be looked at as we go through the capital asset side is a capital asset policy. Specifically, how do you document it? How do you record it? The life of it, minimum cost of it. There's a lot that goes with it and that actually can be combined with the finance policy. That way there's not so many policies. But these are the big ones for our department that affect the city as a whole. We have internal policies as far as like accounting and we follow the basic state standards and, you know, gas being that. We try to, to comply with everything as best we can. If we lined it out internally, of course, it looks better for us.
Part, part of what Megan and I are working towards with, with all of our department heads, when you think about that capital asset policy, we have a marketing point by July 1st. We have to provide to council that five-year capital plan. So we want to make sure we include in future packets is what our capital asset policy is, what our assets look like, and what are we projecting out for the next five years? So you have a cleaner look at that, if that makes sense.
So I hadn't discussed it with Eric, but the first thing I did was went through our assets. This was really brought up. And a good 40% of our assets aren't assets by any definition. Pencil holders, tape dispensers, there's a lot. So you'll get a master list that will say that all of these items are going to be switched off, but they're not, they're not being capitalized on, they're not assets. So basically it turns into inventory. Our system allows us to, to categorize it either way. But everything I put in as an asset because that's how it came over from everybody else in all the departments. So that will change. So the first thing you'll see is the, the quick, if you approve all of the things like, you know, your office chair into an inventory, not an actual capital asset. There are some things that are required to be an asset, whether we like it or not. Firearms are required, doesn't matter the value of it. Of course, land, buildings, some of the items like the water utility billing and all them use, that is inventory. Even though it costs us like painting material, it costs us quite a bit of money, it's still just inventory.
So those things that you move right now, you've got in capital as an asset. Chairs as an example, probably those would be 529, you'd expense them when you buy it. Do you have a strategy so you don't screw up the balance books? Because if you take a whole bunch of things and move them from an asset and make it an expense item, you could screw up your balance sheet pretty significantly if it's as high a part of the asset basis you said.
So most of them actually have no value attached to them anymore?
Oh, they don't?
No, so it's really just gas, which I'm, there are handles that do, depending on the department. Utilities, it's easy because we just switch it in from, to asset depreciated side, we can put it into inventory side.
Fine, okay. Okay, so you're not going to screw up the balance sheet. That was the worry that I had is, you know. And I presume going forward then, when we buy things like that, that got thrown in the asset bucket, it was 529, we expense mountain. Sorry, that's more gap than probably supposed to be more metal back there. I'm sorry, general accounting procedures.
Megan, realizing that one of the major responsibilities of this body is to review and in essence to approve policy, will we be getting updates when policies are updated?
Oh, you have to approve them? That, I, we just go through and I am not one to write my own policy. I go by state guidelines, federal guidelines, and I go out to other, especially other cities for guidance, specifically to, to meet what we need. But it has to also be something that's workable for Alpine. We're not Dallas, we're not Houston, we're not Austin, we're not even Fort Stockton. So it has to work with how we do our internal procedures, but all policies have to be approved by council. Oh, yeah, no, you, you put your staff up. And then last but not least, I hope to have the reserve recommendations already. We had sat down with several of the departments to kind of discuss priorities. One of the, the number one thing we'd have to do is resend organs that had already been approved for dedicating some of the reserves. They had actually been paid for out of the operating budget. So that money is just tied up to something that doesn't really exist, it's, it's been taken care of. So we're going to recalculate basically how the money can be utilized, the best way to meet the priorities of the city and the departments and have it cleaned light. We also have a few reserve accounts that we'd like to open up, kind of split the money between the poles. Right now we do put a lot of it into Texas class, they have a slightly better interest rate. Hard to believe, but yes, 2% instead of 1.5%, which is exciting. But at the same time, we don't want to put all our eggs in one basket. So move some of it into our Texas our account, which we also have. So all those will be listed out in a PowerPoint or Excel spreadsheet to kind of give you an idea. And then of course, plenty of discussion, what's a priority, something that have changed, maybe something's become an emergency. So those will all be ready for you guys, most likely the March 3rd meeting. I am out for a week for training. Hopefully I get my public funds investment certification, my test board, so we'll, we'll invest correctly. So that is all I have. There's no questions, concerns, or answers?
The only question I have, and I know you were all focused on the audit, so I'm not surprised. Your financials ended, you know, but what's the form? We'll close out in time because we're now in February.
So December got pushed back because of the audit. And then I had to reconcile in order to even do the report. So I'm actually halfway done with it. January is, I'm hoping to get you at the same time. Because the budget was amended in January, I have to actually go back and change the original setup to match the new reflected numbers. So it may take me a little bit longer. That's why I've got classes on today. All of the system.
Thank you very much and good luck with your testing.
Thank you, and I'm actually going to slip off to my office to work on those emails.
Oh, no, no, David's got.
Here it is.
Let me see how this clicker works. Okay, January 2020, Building Services Department, five weeks in. I'm going to stand over here if I can get a read of this stuff. So our department has a mission statement and I'll read it as follows. The mission of the Building Services Department is to provide professional services to all citizens of Alpine, Texas in the areas of planning, development, building inspections, plan review, and code enforcement. The second part of the mission statement is the most important. The department seeks to meet the recognized standard of overall quality of life and building safety through a cooperative effort with the citizens of Alpine. That, that second part of the mission statement is what balances the department. So this is very important for going forward. 2019, a dysfunctional year for the department. Strong word, but it's true. Incorrect code enforcement procedures and activities, incorrect code enforcement management, keeping of records. No citations written, all code enforcement violations reported as purple warnings. Overall ineffective proper management, the list goes on and on as you can see. But you're a balance and change, providing a healthy future for the department, top priorities for the Building Services Department. And by no means is this, this is basically the short list. We wish we could accomplish everything in three months, what would take about a year and a half, but it's impossible. So we have to focus on what the most important things are. Working with city manager, deciding where we, where we want to comply protections is the most important thing for the, for the Building Services Department. And I think code enforcement comes up, which we'll get into. Department of Compliance here with T E C Q, the administrative codes of Texas Archive Commission. We're already on board with that. Determine inadequate ordinances, policies, and procedures within the department and then procure tools for the job. So procuring tools for the job is basically software. And that's where it's going to take the Service Department to the next level, the next step, to be more aggressive in code enforcement activities for the month of March. Submit new ordinances that are needed within the city and amend current ordinances that are in conflict with the master plan and zoning regulations. This is time consuming and it's just a work of progress, it's an evolution throughout the year. Review and amend critical ordinances that are no longer valid or do not meet the state requirements. Amend schedule of fees to include master fee schedule for all permanent, which we're almost complete with that project. Still more top priorities. The Texas dot engineer, Chris Weber, I spoke with him, had a meeting with him. And basically, we're going to, we're going to go off of Texas dot standards. But what we've decided, the department is, is that we're going to start including some other requirements as far as the construction standards for the city. And we're going to include this in the master plan, this will be approved by city council. But we're going to include other departments such as utilities and public works to make sure that everybody's on the same page. Revised building service policy and procedures for the future success of the department. That just goes hand in hand with what you were speaking about earlier. Amend the cross connection control ordinance. Part of this cross connection control ordinance, what, what we want to amend is who's in charge of it. So basically utilities department right now is in charge of the cross connection control program. We kind of want to split it up and divide it so that basically everything five foot from any structure, any building becomes building services responsibility. And we can manage that portion of it. That way utilities can worry about five feet and downstream are basically upstream. So it's kind of balancing that out so that not one director has so much to do with one entity. Cross train all employees of the department to be able to provide a much needed professional service to the citizens of Alpine and for the health of the department, to include ongoing training and continuing education each year. My goal is cross training. Cross training means that we have one code enforcement officer that's going through training right now, who'll be certified in one figure, but whoever we bring on in the future will also be cross trained as a code enforcement officer. So they'll be multi-tasked, so they'll be able to do multiple jobs.
So David, you know, one of the areas that we as a community struggle with, you talked about there, is flow control going from the public water system into the transition into homeless and sprinters and all that. And there's no one in this town who does inspection of flow control valves. So that's a real issue because lots of sprinkler systems. I think we need to think about what the strategy is to reward that in such a way that people aren't penalized at the same time we maintain the safety of our water system. And I don't know what the answer is. But as we think about that, because what's going to happen, people will start going underground and say, oh, I don't have a sprinkler system. And it puts you all in a situation of Alpine heights.
Well, I think we've got, I've got a list right now of probably around 65 to 100 flow control devices. I know there's more, I know there's more.
Oh, there's, there's act one.
So part of this software program and part of this enforcement is on all irrigation or anything as far as the pot of water for any commercial application. So this is going to help us not only get an assessment of what's out there, but as we go through the process and city backlayers and all this, it will help us build that department.
Well, I understand that, that's not the question. I'm racing, I think you're doing the right thing to the inventory, finding someone to go do a flow control valve inspection that's required on an annual basis. There's no one to go do that.
Oh, well, that's third party.
No, so that, our code requirement has been there forever. There's no one to go do it.
Well, I'm certified to do it.
Hey, but you're a city employee.
City employee.
So all I'm suggesting is.
It's basically a third-party entity that does it. As, as those come up on an annual basis, then we'll send out letters to the homeowners so that they get that third-party inspection.
So I hear you, we're still not there. There are no third-party certifiers in the city of Alpine to go do that.
Well, they'll, they'll have to.
So we can talk offline, all I'm suggesting is, there's a lot of people understand the code. You've got to have a mechanism for people to go work. the code, you've got to have a mechanism for people to go work that.
I think there's a couple, I think there's two or three that are certified.
Yeah, there's a huge cultural item to go work. Rather than, you can do all the great things to say, we're going to penalize you to go do this. If you don't provide people an opportunity and a way to go work at an economic basis, people are going to go underground. And that's, that's the cultural side I'm trying to help you think about in a way that makes sense. It's like saying, you can't speed in the city of Alpine, but if we have a police department to follow up on that, people are going to speed. Okay, and that's a huge issue in this town on the building side.
I think there, if I'm not mistaken, there's three.
Finding them and getting the work done is the issue. So it's an all order, not you want.
Well, this, I mean, this part, this part of the program, it takes a little while to get going, to get the bill involved. But once it's involved, when we send the, when we send those layers out, the enforcement layers, we give them hand, those qualified testers.
That is the part I'm raising, you have to make sure you got them available. Because finding them now is damn near impossible.
Well, we're here now.
I understand, I get all that, but I'm just trying to give you the sense about what goes on in this town and how people react to it. And without a service to go do it, all I'm saying, you need to help make sure the service is there.
If, if the city takes on the responsibility of leading flow tests, then that's just something that we're going to have to decide at a later date, and it's in that part the bill is going to be included into.
I don't know what the solution is, I'm just saying, having a code requirement without a way to verify it is an issue if you want to make that.
That's what every...
I'm not arguing.
I've got that issue in every section of my department.
I'm with you, but I bet there are thousands of hours that need to be certified.
There, well, I would assume it's supposed to be a thousand hours. I've got a list of about a hundred.
Yeah.
Economic development, do we ask for opportunities?
Well, that may be, yeah. So as part of this notion, you know, we've struggled as a city to get Tech to certify from a TCEQ standpoint, and we're making the investment to go do that. I think we need to think about what those implications are and how to go work that in such a way that someone's willing to go get the test, get certified, and charge an economical value, or you force people underground. And you want to have a solution that balances out all of the right way.
Part of that is, I know that other cities do that, but they put it on the, they add that to the water bill itself.
That may be a strategy.
But that don't have, I mean, that don't have to be written into the new ordinance.
That may be a strategy.
AEP's compliance with Building Service Electrical Releases Program is, well, five weeks in, it's been difficult, transition for AEP, but I think this, within the past week, it's gotten to be where it's, it's balanced, you know. So program's actually working.
So what does that mean?
Well, most of the compliance issues were with change of ownership or change of occupancy, electrical releases, that substandard structures that were, AEP was actually just turning electricity on to. Yeah. So, and we've actually got a new permitting process for that as well. AEP is on board.
Good. So they won't turn it on unless it passes.
Right, it goes back to the property management code, but part of the property management code is kind of a steep situation to enforce, from a legal perspective standpoint, but we're doing everything that we can, and this, this program is part of that enforcement through the property management. Most important thing for me is plan review implementation and permitting process. This was non-existent, so today, it's, it's in existence, and this is going to help in the comprehensive, in the future for the comprehensive plan to determine what businesses are actually coming into existence, what they're, what they're submitting, and apply the codes, basically, if they are complying with the codes, then we should adopt them. Very, very crucial. February, March, Pathway to Achieve Balance, software code enforcement training certification, completion of all new revised permit applications, short term rental ordinance, citizens portal website for Building Services Department and zoning ordinance amendments. So it's, it's kind of a big list, but this is, this is the short list. That's it.
You got your mental work. I was going to give you that, but I'm just trying to...
No, no, it's a good thing, it's just that when implementing a program like that, we have to, it's kind of long term, and you have to make a lot of changes.
No question, yes.
But the revenue, I know Mesquite does, and the revenue that's generated from it is pretty big.
I agree with that, people go underground.
Yeah.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, public hearings, we have none, and consent agenda, minutes, financial reports, department advisory reports, board of committees, and I'm sure this will keep city manager.
So the consent agenda, following items are, of routine administrative nature, the council information background, support material on each item, or it has been discussed at a previous meeting. All items will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by council member, in which event the item or items will immediately be withdrawn or is lethal consideration in its normal sequence after the items, not requiring excessive discussion and then acted upon. Remaining items will be adopted by one vote. Only have one item on the consent agenda, and Steve, by May, approval of minutes from city council, May, January 21st, excuse me, 2020.
It should be 2020.
Yes, it is.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that we approve the consent agenda as written with the current edit, and it's a...
Okay, sir, a second. Okay, it's been seconded, in any discussion. Polls of favor, raise your right hand. If opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you. And let's go to item number eight, information or discussion items. City manager.
First item we have is an update in Art Block from our November 2019 event. Chris, was Carrie able to make it this evening?
I understood that somebody was, from the board, was going to be here, but they are not. I could, uh...
Hi, Carrie.
I did let you know, just anecdotally, the business owners that I talked to told me uniformly that it was their best in a while, if not ever. Businesses even not on Holland, you know, kind of off of the main throngs were really, were really happy, like Black Cat Vintage around the corner. And you know how the, that center of gravity up and down Holland Avenue is, is a, has a tyranny to it almost, you've got a business that's a few feet off of that, and sometimes they wouldn't see a lot of traffic, but everybody I spoke to was, was really happy, in terms of the business owners. So in that sense, I can report that it was a great success.
I think we can, that attributes a lot to the weather also.
Yes, certainly. Can I answer any questions, or at least carry them away from Art Block?
Well, Carrie, I had one for you. No, it was, I saw a lot of people in the streets, which was great, it was a busy weekend. Yeah. Okay, sir, thank you very much.
Next item, there is our Texas Southwestern Rail Conference, 2020 conference, January 21st, Board of Directors, Councilmembers, and I, I'm in it. Don't kick it off, Councilmembers, you love to kick it off.
What's your idea to kick it off? I can pull them like some.
You know, certainly the idea around attending the conference was predicated on, you know, a couple, a couple key things. We know that our, our rail traffic is continuing to increase, and the trains are getting longer, we had our challenges on the crossovers, or the changeovers, and thinking through that is, is, you know, we talk about what's the right thing to do, both with truck traffic and rail traffic. And if you think about, you know, is bypass creation or bypass the right thing to do? One of the important things is our attendance and engagement with the other players in the state, and learning from, from them, as well as having an opportunity in a conference setting the interface with folks from UP outside of Mr. Ivan Heine, who is our primary representative. So certainly, you know, I think about, kind of call it overall conference content, items like tourist rail lines were out there, and we certainly see Amtrak coming through Alpine, right? And that creates, whether it's a worker tourist type destination, but there are other rails across the state, across the country, that are more touristy in nature. But, you know, so then we also, you know, saw quite a bit of the technology improvements as they relate to safety and the management of the rail lines, to the point where you've got these camera systems that encompass, so trains coming through, it's looking at the underside, it's looking at the underside, specifically the underside, if you've got bolts missing, if you have major issues down below that could cause some sort of trail, train accident. And so that's where we really see the industry going, plus discussions around autonomous rail, and capacity and capability of these trains to run without a physical human onboard, right? So how do we still create that safety? Now, we heard discussions relative to rail as economic development. One of the things that I, I didn't know, and I'm sharing this with, with Dick and Gene, anybody buys that Niagara bottled water? Anybody bought that?
Right.
So it comes out of Temple, Texas. It's Temple, Texas tap water.
Wow, it is. Well, most of it's tap water, it's distilled.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Used in municipal water.
So part of their intermodal park, right, was, was working in conjunction with the parent company that owns Niagara Water, and the, Temple was, was their place of business.
Yeah, they started originally to go build it, they thought they'd build this big rail park, and Toyota was going to come in. Toyota backed out, they scrambled, and one of the customers they brought in was Niagara. So just think about, all the water coming out of the ground, into the bottles, hauled out by rail. And so they viewed that as a huge opportunity, and low capital cost to make all that happen.
And I guess because you see so many folks buying bottled water.
Exactly.
In stores.
Exactly.
Or sold now that everyone...
Or sold like before, it's a huge market. Flow market. So, hanging them, are you? Someone asked, where's the water come from? Right out of the town.
I don't even drink tap water.
That's right.
We don't, I don't drink tap water. I mean, I use, we get our own water, that's what a lot of it is, like the saltwater is tap water that's been doing in our system. That's probably the same, right?
Yeah, that's what we call it.
So it tastes better.
You know, the, the other piece is, you know, when you think about interconnection and then your local transport, so how are your rail lines interconnecting? How also are they interconnecting back with truck traffic that imports docked, it's quantificated, you know, some sort of intermodal or, you know, offload for the train traffic? It's not something that we've certainly contemplated here in Alpine, but, you know, when you have a bissection like we do, where that Southern Pacific or now Transpacifico line is, is intersecting with UP, you know, does that create some sort of longer term economic development plan for, for our city? We also had the opportunity to walk through what's going on at state level and some legislation there. It was more of bills that had been blocked, but there continues to be some momentum. I think both legislators identified Governor Abbott's comments around TechStop highways and the work that they're doing right now may be the last heavy, heavy push at, at highways, and there's more alternate types of transportation like rail and other things that are just a... And then, got some real look into some of the federal level infrastructure type bills that are out there, as we think about, if, if the rail moves out of town, if you're able to build a bypass for truck traffic, what dollars do you tap into? So there were, there were folks there able to present, and us to get contacts with and talk about, what do those dollars look like, right? Because it's not something that Alpine could afford on its own, but, but there certainly are infrastructure bills or grants that are out there to handle that. You know, really thinking about some of the focuses and the takeaways are, you know, a lot of the conversation we got into with some of the old UP type people, and, and approach to alleviate that blockage on, on Fifth Street that plagues the south side of our city. And their suggestion was just write the ordinance, and create the fine structure, and that will get UP's attention. So that's, you know, something that we're going to go through this evening, as far as an action item. You know, and then continue to engage with Transpacifico about their plans and the implications. They do believe the bridge down from Cidio will be up and functional by September. Their goal is to push two pieces of traffic a week to begin with, and then grow from there. So how do we look at not only the creation of the quiet zone in the short term, but the longer term, as we look at, you know, if we can move the, the rail traffic out of town, what does that look like for them too? Jorge from Transpacifico is certainly an engaging individual, and he's got some continuity with that organization too. And then, you know, our other kind of focus relative to gathering how we pursue these federal grants in the future. You know, we've got the ordinance queued up for this evening. Also, when we think about going after it and attacking some of these federal grants, we've got to start our homework now, we've got to build that plan now, and engage the state representatives, the state senators, TechStop, US Department of Transportation, all of our governing entities locally, and gain support, because it's through that support that we increase our, our probability of getting some of those federal grants. And certainly continue engagement and to influence that, that TechStop regional freight study. Vicky Roscoe's got another meeting coming up here in a few weeks, and how we engage with them and understand truck traffic as it's coming through too, because all of this really works hand in hand with us, that truck and rail, and, you know, a couple of residents I mentioned earlier that I had seen in Coconut Park, you know, one of them talked to me this weekend about his absolute concern that if we don't do anything in 10 to 12 years, downtown Alpine could really, really be in bad shape with the amount of truck and long trains. So, you know, we've got an opportunity to act now. And then really, you know, one of the, one of the statements that then was broadcast there was four P's, prioritize, prepare, present, promote. So all of these plans, we've got to prioritize, we've got to prepare good, solid, fundamental, whether it's engineering behind it, you know, it's, it's preparing the support of all the other entities. And then, you know, as we bring that presentation forward, you know, how do we then promote it as well? Part of that, you know, as we kind of jump into the next slide, or really as the last slide, identified some key relationships, but when we think about that transportation vision plan, right, so how do we walk into what transportation needs to look like longer term for the city of Alpine? My sense is, we're going to have to move into this creation of some type of committee advisory board that works back to the committee on open community forums, and it really helps look forward that way. Not a whole lot different than that city vision plan back in 2015, 16, as well as the March 14.
Kevin, the, for me, want to report about, these are long cycle time activities, these are 10 to 20 years that have to get worked. As you recall, I shared the discussion room in San Angelo here a couple months ago. This is to continue on on that discussion about the freight transportation study that's going to be finished up later on this year. So having an integrated plan from a city perspective is going to be important, because the federal dollars are going to get allocated probably long afterward, termed out by all our council. But playing that foundation now allows the future of who sits at this table to make sure they're going after the dollars to... going after the dollars to, to support what those changes are going to be. Now, I was, I was listening to one of the discussions with one of our state senators here a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, and one of the things that could happen is up to, you know, 8,000 additional trucks going through Alpine due to the border crossing at Presidio happens as they would expect. And someone made a comment, well, we're not going to get 8,000 trucks across there. I would beg to differ. 20 years from now, we probably will. And if we don't think about that now, when those 8,000 hit, they're going to be running right down into our streets. And that would, in my mind, be a real tragedy for the city of Alpine if we're not getting ahead of that. I think the discussion that Eric mentioned with Jorge at, at Texas Pacifico, he's the senior VP for operations. So he knows and he'll be worrying about what the rails are coming through here. Now's the time we want to work with them to, on getting the quiet zone put in place, you know, as they come across that 11 miles that's consistent with UP and then start continuing head north to parallel Ohio 118. Let's get those quiet zones in now so we don't have the war horns blowing, we get, we get that quiet zone to work. So these are all the sorts of things we've got to think through. And, and I think it's going to be important for us to, as Eric mentioned, get that committee put together, think about it long term. So this council's got some things to say.
And that's something on those lines we need to educate the public.
No question.
Because that's, that's the big, the main, a lot of times the big stunt.
No question.
Is try to break an online into it. Because I know City had a chance and opportunity years ago to have the quiet zone. It didn't happen. So we lost that relationship with UP.
Yep.
Now, again, I think we need to get it going again, get that dialogue going again with them and what's it going to take to get that quiet zone? Because I had talked to them in the first, first freight meeting we had about that. We're going to have war horns, like you said. There's going to be the one crossing of 118.
Yep.
And so that needs to be addressed, or you know, put arms up there, what are you going to do? And that is kind of tricky highway because people coming off doing 70, they started slowing down, I don't know, slow down. And also there's a train shooting across.
Yep.
So, you know, we, we have to address those issues right now. And you're right, we need, as a council, start setting the foundation for whoever comes in after us. Because, you know, it might not happen tomorrow or the day after, but in the future, we need to be ready. It'll cost less money also.
I also strongly agree that, uh, we should start to lay the framework with a long-term strategy to 10 to 20 year vision for the railroad with the possibility that maybe we could look at establishing another section up closer to outside of town for the shift over or the, for, you know, passengers on and off. And that would liberate all the, the pathways between Holland Avenue and of course Main Pork Street. And then that would be available for people and the traffic. But it is something that I definitely feel that we should get our talks together and get all the proper entities in line and, and let's go for something. It's, it's, it's important. And sooner we do it, I think, the better. And just to add to the, the truck of semis coming to the area, today there was coming off of Sixth Street, there were two semis who basically stopped over at, um, at, at Stripes. And it's amazing, these huge, uh, vehicles, and they're blocking, they block visibility and they're blocking traffic. They're huge there, so as it increases, we're going to see a lot more of that down the town.
Yeah, I think near term, people are going to be surprised when the trains are not a mile long, they're two miles long.
Yeah, well, they're only talking about it, just certain that discussion.
Well, as soon as they finish up Martha, when they let the bypass, they will be two miles long.
12,000 feet.
Yeah, so just think about what it takes to get a train started now if it stops at, for one mile, but two miles and they're, oh my gosh.
And, and hopefully now all the public will be aware that they had talked about the future then and it happened.
They do.
Or talking about it again, if we need to make it happen.
Yep, absolutely.
You done?
We're done.
Okay. Item number nine, extra items to be accommodated by, which stipulate facts, include where funds are coming from if applicable. Action limits limited to ten per meeting. After being called upon by the mayor, may approach him. Citizens are required to say their name and the board of which side, probably will be given to citizens of Alpine and also in businesses or property in the city. Individuals who do not live in our own businesses or property in the city that is of Alpine will be allowed to speak with those townsfolk, city manager.
First item, the members of the council is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action to approve Resolution 2020 dash zero two dash zero one to accept the donation to the Alpine Police Department for 15 tactical vests plus one entry shield from the Cape Police Department.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I approve Resolution 2020 dash zero two dash zero one to accept the tactical vest and the entry shield from Cape Police Department.
Good night. Okay, there's a second? Any discussion? I've got a little comment tonight about that. It's a good thing we got a chief that's got a contact over there. Be cheated.
Yes.
Yeah, say, say those 12, 12,000, a little over 12,000 dollars. And, and the police would be happy with that.
And I believe I've got some more stuff.
You got anything to comment on that?
I've got some more stuff coming.
I want to follow you, please.
You know you're going to present a little bit.
Really appreciate Cape Police Department is actually one of my officers that work for me, that works for this company part-time. And they got with me and asked if we could use these and I absolutely, uh, the, he didn't want to be disclosed what the company was, uh, but he reached out and asked what else we might like to have, and so we made up some other things.
Vegas.
How do we thank them?
They don't want, that's the hard part. They don't want, they, they're thanking us for taking.
So should we send, should we put a resolution together to say thank you, Cape Police Department?
An anonymous.
It's, it's really not Cape Police Department. It's, it's a, a Cape police officer that works, has, not as a police officer, worked for this company part-time that sells tactical equipment. And the owner of that company, which doesn't, not want any recognition, is wanting to help us.
So was that in anonymous, thank you?
You're anonymous, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Any more discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Those who want to sign, motion carries.
Mayor, City Council, item two is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action on first reading of ordinance 2020 dash zero two dash zero three, establishing music advisory board for the city of Alpine. This is one of the two advisory board ordinances that we have back in tonight. The opportunity to go through that. Chris Ruggia, who's been working on, um, the resolution where we created a, a music advisory, or, I'm sorry, a music friendly, uh, community, he, he worked with us on putting this ordinance together as well. Once council makes a motion, we should, he'll, he'll be here to answer some questions.
Okay. I'll need a motion from the council.
So, Mr. Mayor, I approve that we approve the first reading of ordinance 2020 dash zero two dash zero three, establishing music advisory board for the city of Alpine.
Is there a second? Okay, motion's been made, seconded. Discussion, now you're on, Chris.
The one thing I would ask about is the initial draft had a twice yearly meeting schedule and the current ordinance had a quarterly.
If I change it to quarterly.
I was wondering if there's anybody who could change it back. I did get, I got confirmation from the board members on a commitment of twice a year.
Okay.
And I, I wouldn't want to ask them to do more than they've already agreed to. I don't know what the process would, if that wrinkles things too much.
So it's easy to change because the way in which first reading is, you can edit all you want, and then it goes out for public hearing for the final, and it's only happens when the second one's approved. That's why we do a first reading.
If that's okay.
We can, we can go back to, uh, the, the reason for that was to try to keep it in alignment with the hotel occupancy tax.
Musicians are weird, so they, they'll like that.
I'm not a musician, so I trust your judgment. You're a great musician.
Well, thank you. I did hear from the Texas Music Office today, that the first step after the formation of the, the board is a workshop with the Texas Music Office. Ordinarily, they come in person, uh, but they are having a lot of activity with South by Southwest, so it looks like they're asking if we can do a conference call with, uh, the board as our first, we'll probably do that at, at our first meeting and get that requirement out of the way. And that should be all we need to get that certification.
And Ben, Tom, the gentleman, actually, I think we all know him here on the council, he had applied for the city manager position before you did, Eric. And he has got a lot of contacts in the music industry. He wants to, uh, have Alpine more of a music type city. And with his contacts, he was telling me I could make it happen. So I will give you his info.
Please do.
Thank you too, because he wants me to take to the event center north of town, uh, perhaps see if it's a liable place to have a music concert or something.
Yeah, I would love to talk to him.
So, okay?
Please send it to me, yeah.
Uh, a couple of questions. One is, uh, could you expand a little bit as to what, what the office has maintained in a vibrant musical industry, promote tourism? What is vibrant musical?
Well, uh, Texas Music Office's mission is economic development. And so they're identifying, and it's, you know, coming out of the Austin, has made such a brand of itself as the licensing capital of the world, I think they call it. Uh, and so part of the mission of that office is to recognize the economic impact of the music, of music as an industry, but also encourage it. So that, that's why they started this program, to encourage communities throughout the state, kind of to take their music industry seriously. And so in that sense, we already have, I think, a vibrant musical community. And what this board could hopefully help is, uh, help that community focus itself on what it needs. And then hope it possibly through those conversations, we might, this is, I think, the intention of the Texas Music Office, is that we might then find some policy, some , uh, city issues where that board might then bring something to you guys and say, here's a, a need we've identified that, that would make, uh, things easier or more profitable or whatever of the music industry that you all might consider, uh, as policy ordinance changes. I, I don't know that that's going to happen, but that's, this board gives us a magnet to do that. My expectation is that, uh, is that most of it would, uh, would be just that, that format where they actually think about, hey, what are we really doing here? What, what, how are we doing it? What could we do better? So that's, that's where we energize the industry that we have here.
It's very similar to a, a program that was initiated in Mexico, which the state government supports, uh, the towns where most tourism basically go to, enjoy themselves, stay and purchase. For example, in Santa Fe, during the summer, funds were made available so that the city could contract an array of musicians to come in and play on Thursday through Sunday. And it basically freed the public, of course, with tremendous promotion back during tourism. I think, but my second question is, the advisory board, um, who's going to be participating? How is it, how is it, is it voluntary or who's going to be selecting advisory board members?
At the first meeting with the resolution, I provided a list of, uh, members and arguments. And so I've approached that list, and so we'll bring that back to you.
For the second.
At the second meeting?
So is it the selection would be made for the, uh, the anticipation of, of selecting would be made by?
The, well, the recommendation would be the main counsel.
Yeah, the ordinance stipulates that, uh, that Eric, well, the city manager and the tourism director, and he was also the music liaison under this board, would recommend a slate to council for inspiration. So we will do that as the next.
And I will be brought to work with you.
Yes. And to your point as well, uh, I hope that this, that we might come up with, depending on availability, the hotel funds promotion of the arts is, uh, is often here used for music. And I would, I would love to see possibly this board, uh, help to administrate or at least, uh, give input on some programs like you're talking about, where we can use some of that promotion of the arts money for, uh, for both local performers and possibly bringing some people in for, uh, then buy folks to come to that town. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Yes?
So the only item that I have on the ordinance itself is membership of the resident citizens, taxpayers, qualified members of the city. All of our other commissions, we modified the language to allow those who may have property here, engagement and be outside the city. This is not, so I think we need to align it with the other six boards.
Sir? Yeah, I, I took it from the existing park board and I didn't realize you did that.
That all been changed.
Okay. Gotcha. Do you copy that I had to work from?
Yeah, that'd be helpful. Because you need to have someone within the county engaged in the city, just as they can not be.
Okay, any more discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Those who are signed, motion carries. Thank you. Item three, city manager.
Mayor, City Council. Item number three is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action on the first reading of that ordinance, 20-